Good afternoon. We will now call the meeting of the Waco City Council, February 18th, 2020, to order at 3:00 PM. Welcome to our guests. All council members are present. Please join us for a moment in silence. Thank you. We will now recess the regular session and convene to work session with a report from the city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good afternoon to you and the council members. There are no changes to the agenda today. I would like to recognize the city staff. We have a fairly large agenda today, a lot of work by the staff, and I want to thank them for putting this together. It's a very good forward-moving agenda. Under employee recognition, I'd like to recognize our Chief Financial Officer, Janice Andrews, and her Assistant Director of Finance, Rusty Hill, for their -- Janice is right here on the front row -- for their work on putting together the official statement for our bond sale, all the great work they did, putting a presentation together for the bond rating calls that we had with Standard and Poor's and Moody's. I'd also like to recognize the other members of the bond rating call team, Bradley Ford, Dieter Emerson, Paul Kane, Millet Harrison, and Lisa Tyre. They did a great job, good presentation, and we received strong indicators from both rating agencies on the city's financial condition, and we maintained both of our AA bond ratings. So I want to thank them for that great work, and we had a good team. And then, I guess, the end result was even better than we hoped for. We sold our bonds and got an interest rate of 2.04% for those bonds.
That's the most rate we've had in...
It was 2.008, I thought. For 20-year debt, that's fantastic. That's amazing.
That's outstanding.
That's a true job.
Okay, okay. That's still, that is an absolutely phenomenal rate.
Congratulations.
Yeah, good job.
Also, under employee recognition, at the animal shelter, we've been without a director for a while, and Kent George, who normally works in economic development, has agreed to go over there. I think he kind of volunteered.
[laughter]
And Kent, I want to recognize you for going over there. So Kent, would you raise your hand at least to be acknowledged? There you go. And I'm jealous. I'd like to go do that myself, so... But I do appreciate that, Kent. Also, under employee recognition, on your agenda today is a resolution to approve the retirement of police service dog, Hondo. And Hondo was here with us today. He was born in Europe in 2012. Officer Cody Weiser is bringing down Hondo. He was born in Europe. We acquired him in 2014. He was partnered with K-9 Handler Officer Cody Weiser. Together, they completed a tremendous amount of intensive training courses. He has, during his career, Hondo has participated in 253 primary arrests and 397 assisted arrests. So upon retirement, his ownership will transfer to Officer Weiser, who will continue to care for him. And I want to thank you, Officer, for taking care of Hondo and for all of y'all's great work over the years for the city of Waco. Thank you very much. Also, under employee recognition, over the weekend, there was a house fire in North Waco, and I'd like to recognize the crew, the fire crew, today that was involved in rescuing a gentleman from a burning bedroom.
Yeah, house.
I want them all to stand and be recognized. Lieutenant David Lopez, and I believe he's not here today, firefighter Aaron Amos, firefighter Jose Guerrero, and firefighter Nathaniel Reimer. So we appreciate those. Under informal reports, there are two for you today. The first is the Waco Police Department's 2019 racial profiling report, and Chief Holt is here if y'all have any questions on that report.
No questions on my part, but I do want to commend our Waco Police Department. I know sometimes, a lot of times, unfortunately, Waco PD doesn't get -- we just hear the bad stuff. And so, reading reports like this, it makes it very encouraging to know that we have some men and women in blue on our streets, fighting crime every day, putting their lives in danger, and still doing it with such integrity and transparency while still abiding by the law and making sure that every person, every citizen, every tourist, every person that comes through our city is safe and want to make it a great experience for us that live here and those that are visiting as well. So, Chief, I really just want to commend you on your work with the Waco Fire -- excuse me, Waco Police Department. And please congratulate your team and your department on such a great report. It was very encouraging to read such wonderful statistics. And this just goes back to show, you know, one of council's priorities of equity and inclusion, and we're even seeing that within our police department. So thank you so much, Chief, for your work with this.
Hold your applause. We can applaud Chief Holt anytime. I just wanted to say that, again, great reporting here, Chief. And I just want to bring up an anecdotal deal. It's been several months ago that a concerned citizen and myself went and visited with you about this very issue of racial profiling. And you were very committed and gave us a lot of time and explanation, and it's a deep and complex subject, and I appreciate that. And the guy emailed me after that and said, "Ma'am, we've got a great chief, and he's on top of it. The trains are fantastic." So I just wanted to share that with everybody, that I appreciate your efforts in this, a very important part of what we do in our police work here at Waco PD and the city of Waco. Thanks. Now we can applaud Chief one more time.
Thank you, Chief, for this detailed report from the creation of the racial profiling law and then the Sandra Bland Act, that we have taken an incredibly proactive take and stance on educating our officers on racial profiling, that we have not had the type of interactions that other cities have speaks volumes for our men and women in blue, that that lesson is transferred not only to your officers, but when you do your Citizen Police Academy, it's expressed there. I mean, if anybody had, you know, the youth council, you know, got information about all the things that you do and the reasons why you do them, and that's important. If you, as a citizen, have not engaged in the Citizens' Police Academy, you should, because it really gives -- no one really knows what all happens and goes on and the depths and breadth that we have to go down to ensure that our citizens are treated equitably. And the level of support and dedication to Race Equity Institute that the leadership in the police department has taken and will continue to take is evidence of their dedication to being fair and just to our citizens. We hold you to that esteem. So we appreciate the efforts that you've given so far. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. This is not a surprise. It's just another example of the great work that you and your team do. If the public would like to see this, it is about an 80-page report that's in our agenda, and all of those are always available online, and it would be worth your time to take a look at this. But it's an excellent report and just makes us proud. So thank you. Thank you and your team.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council. The next informal report is on our electricity provider contract. I think it was in September, the council authorized me to work with our staff to get some bids on electricity for up to an additional seven years. We have a little bit of time, a couple of years left on our existing contract. And I'm very pleased to inform the council today, our new energy contract, which will become effective in April 2022, there's a cost savings compared to our current contract of over $400,000 per year. It is a 100% renewable energy contract that the industry refers to as physically green. This means the facilities that produce the power are identified in the contract. The city, even though the facilities are identified in the contract, the city is only obligated to pay for the electricity we consume. The process was lengthy and complex, so I want to thank our staff, Kelly Holcheck, our Director of General Services, Paul Kane, our Assistant City Manager, and David Shaw from our legal department, for all their great work on this contract, along with our energy consultant, Amorex, which was absolutely critical to the work that they did to pull these bids together and get the proposals. Although we could have achieved additional savings by buying brown power, the cost difference is more than justified when considering water conservation and air quality. This council and past councils have led efforts toward improving and protecting air quality in our region. Waco leadership is also dedicated to water conservation. This renewable energy contract saves thousands of acre-feet of water while protecting air quality. The impact of these two aspects of this contract far exceed the potential savings of buying brown electricity. The contract was executed last Wednesday, and I'm really proud to bring this information to y'all. I think this is a great business decision for the city of Waco, and I appreciate y'all giving me the authority to move forward with this.
Wiley, thank you also, again, for this presentat -- oh, for this informal report, excuse me. You know, I think it's very important that we see that this is 100% green renewable energy, but not only that, but it's also physically responsible. So our rate that we are getting is 14.5% lower than the current rate, which will allow us almost a $3 million savings in the next seven years. So all around, it's a win-win situation, and so congratulations to Paul, to Kelly, and to David and everyone who worked on this process. It's just one of those things that I think that the city of Waco can be proud of, to say that we are moving in that direction of being more friendly to our environment and that we are really putting our money where our mouth is and saying it's important to us, just like it's important to so many of our community members. And so, thank you so much for your work with this.
And I'll just echo Hector's observations there. And I think it's important, Wiley, as you point out the tangential effects of the groundwater and air quality, which kind of make this a pretty special thing. I think that as we look at renewables and wisely engaging our city budget into that, those concepts, I think, is a good thing, and it helps taxpayers in the long run.
So you had mentioned that some additional savings would have been realized should we have gone with a total fossil fuel-type contract. About how much per year would that, would less would that have been based on what we're looking at right now, based on just contemplated usage?
It's right at $100,000.
Okay. So, I mean, and I think for us as policymakers, when we're looking at the economic impact of, you know, I mean, we want to be responsible. We want to invest in sustainability. We want to do things that are good for the city, but we also want to be very cognizant of the fact that a lot of times that does cost more. So, I mean, over the seven years of this contract, I mean, that is going to be $700,000 over the life of it, and that begins in 2022 through 2029. I mean, to Wiley's point, I mean, I do think there are a lot of benefits to be accrued by going 100% renewable, but I think it's important for us to be very cognizant of the costs associated with that and just making sure that we're being as responsible as possible to our taxpayers and to the city as we weigh the added costs of pursuing some of these sustainability initiatives.
And I'll just say, I mean, I think this is, I think this is a very good thing, and I think it follows on the heels of our November presentation with the Energy Guidance Document, and it's really the first tangible item that has come out of that. And I think it shows the wisdom of approaching this from a very organized and well-thought-out approach, and I'm very pleased with the contract. So, thank you.
Thank you, council members. And I'd like to invite Larry Halsey to give the Halsey Report.
Well, thank you very much. Everybody turn your attention to your monitors. The Texas Forest Service conducted a 70-acre prescribed burn at the Waco Wetlands on Friday, February the 7th. Prescribed burns are used as a management tool in natural areas and state parks to improve habitat for wildlife by restoring woodlands, wetlands, and savannas. They're also conducted to reduce the amount of available fuels, such as cedar, willow, trees, fallen branches, understory growth, and dead trees that accumulate naturally and from storm events. Sunday, February the 9th marked the official completion and revealing of 28 sculptures along University Parks Drive, leading through the entrance of Cameron Park that makes up for the park of the Waco Sculpture Zoo Project. Private donors, led by Clifton and Betsy Robinson, made the sculptures possible, a significant amount of work and resources for the project provided by the city's Parks and Recreation Department in structural design, installation, landscaping, and others. Other city departments involved included legal, finance, purchasing, public works, information technology, and municipal information. Donors provided approximately $750,000 for the sculptures, while the city provided and funded the engineering and installation of the cost of approximately $250,000. Vans were provided for citizens to ride down University Parks Drive to see the sculptures, and a reception was held in the brassist room of the convention center provided by Creative Waco. The Baylor Law School held a People's Law Day on Saturday, February the 15th, and offered half-day curriculum, 20 courses designated to educate citizens about their legal rights and to make the law user-friendly. The courses were taught by volunteer attorneys, a legal expert, including Assistant City Attorney Kathy Purdon, and Millet Harrison from the city's Economic Development Department, who together taught the City Government 101 Course. City Waco was one of the sponsors of this free public event. An environmental science lab class from MCC visited the Cobb's Recycling Center on Thursday, February the 6th, to gain knowledge of how solid waste is handled in our community. The students received an overview of recyclables that are accepted at the city's facility, and where the items go, and what the end uses for the recycled items are. They also discussed the stormwater permit and used oil antifreeze registration. The classes were also tour the city's landfill in the next few weeks, as well as Sunbright Recycling and Waco Habitat Restore. The Waco Mammoth National Monument normally hosts school trips from things, people around the area, but this particular thing, on Thursday, February the 6th, an education action group of 75 5th graders from Dallas got a firsthand look at the 60,000-year-old herd of mammoths and got to meet a national park ranger. The Waco Mammoth National Monument continues to attract visitors that add to the overall count to our city. Students from A.J. Moore Academy at University High School provided free tax preparation at the Central Library on Friday, February the 14th. They will be at the West Waco Library on February the 19th. They'll be at the South Waco Library on March the 4th, and the East Waco Library on March the 18th. Citizens whose dogs have not been microchipped have been, can have it done for free with proof of Waco residency at the animal shelter on Saturday, February the 22nd. And Keep Waco Beautiful will be holding a city council District 4 cleanup on Saturday, February the 29th, to allow residents in that district to place brush and bulky items at the curb for pickup on that day. And that completes my report.
It's a great report, Larry, and I want to just thank everyone that was involved in the sculpture zoo. That project is just, you drive down or walk down the University Parks Drive now, and you see all the people that are out there enjoying those great sculptures. It is another big piece of public art in Waco, which is exciting. Really want to thank all the donors, especially Clifton and Betsy Robinson, and all the other donors, including two of our council members, John Kennard and Councilmember Holmes. Really appreciate you guys. And then Creative Waco did a great job facilitating it, but it also became a huge, more complicated project when we had a change in our floodplain that required a lot of extra engineering. And I want to thank all the people in Waco within the city organization that helped us work through that, especially Tom Balk, who just did a great job of leading all that work, and with parks, and there's, you know, an awful lot of different departments that touch that. So y'all have done a great job on that, and it'll be something that people will enjoy for a long, long time to come.
Well, and I think it just further exemplifies and makes the case for continued investment in public art. Just, not only does it look nice, but it actually provides, I think, a heightened quality of life, and just that investment in arts and culture in our community have dividends beyond just the economic, though there are positive ones there, too.
Absolutely. Absolutely. All right.
Okay. Thank you, council. Today, we have 13 public hearings. Our Director of Planning and Inspection, Clint Peters, is here at the work session to discuss those items. Under resolutions, there are 27. The first I'd like to mention is Resolution 2020-108. This amends an interlocal agreement between the city and the county for the expansion projects at the Cameron Park Zoo to clarify that the city is authorized to use a construction manager-at-risk project delivery method. This will allow us to move forward with that project when the county sells the bonds. And I think it also clarifies how we will be reimbursed from the bond dollars. We appreciate the county's partnership on this very important project.
Absolutely.
Resolution 2020-109 ratifies an award emergency contract to replace the boilers at the police tower, and we, after evaluating, we determined that replacement was better than repair, and we'll get higher-efficiency boilers when we do that. The resolutions, also, we have 2020-110, professional services contract with CPNY to perform architectural services for the replacement of the glass on the police tower. This is a very important project, and the glass, the curtain around that tower, it will be completely replaced under this project, and we need an assessment and then develop a set of specifications and provide them for inspection of the work. The work will be conducted in two phases, and we anticipate that moving forward real quickly. This is funded through the bond sale that we did last week. Resolution 2020-113 through 115 are the request for support on affordable housing projects, and our Director of Housing Code Enforcement, Galen Price, is here to discuss those items in the work session. Resolution 2020-121 reinitiates the efforts of the city of Waco to take possession and control of Greenwood Cemetery in order to better provide for the cemetery's care and to establish a perimeter fence. The following resolution, 2020-122, is the bid award for the fence, and this is another great project from the mind of Tom Balk, so we appreciate Tom's leadership on this. It's been going on a long time, and I'm glad we're finally bringing it forward.
Just on the Greenwood in general, I want to bring up our former councilman, Noah Jackson. That was a project that was near and dear to his heart, too, and he was very articulate in how he framed the issues there, and I so appreciate his frankness in getting this going. And Tom Balk, I'll mention him again, how he worked on giving this project some life and some energy, and where we're at on it now. And I just, taking kind of a complex issue with all these different fee simple and, you know, different little pieces of tracks and putting it all together and getting a final solution on it, I know Tom wasn't easy, but I appreciate everybody's work on that.
Yeah, I spoke with former Councilmember Jackson on Sunday and let him know that this was coming up on the agenda, and he was very pleased to see that, you know, we're taking this step to go ahead and make that a completed task. So, thank you, Tom. Thank you, team.
Resolution 2020-123 is a contract award to Nimro Electric for Kendrick Park Lighting Improvements Project at an amount not to exceed $82,254. The project includes the addition of trail lighting along the newly constructed trail loops and additional sport court lighting. This effort is funded through the Community Development Block Grant Program.
I do want to say thank you so much for this project. You know, Kendrick Park was recently renovated, and since the renovation, I have seen families flock back to the park and using it recreationally, using it for exercise, using it for meetings, et cetera, things like that. And it's just, I've heard so many comments from the Kendrick Neighborhood Association and neighbors around how much they enjoy the park, and so even adding extra lights to this, I think it's just going to make that experience much more enjoyable and pleasurable for the people that not only live in that area, but people that come from all over the city to utilize that park. And so, I'm very excited to see this project moving forward. So thank you so much to the team that has really been working hard on this project. Thank you from the bottom of my heart.
Resolution 2020-130 approves a contract with CPNY for the 17th Street Bridge Repair Project to include design, bidding, construction phase services, and special services, including a traffic control plan, temporary easement work, and resident project representation. This contract amounts not to exceed $320,035. We're anticipating the full cost of the bridge rehabilitation to be about $1,000,400.
Yes. Once again, I'll say thank you again for this resolution on the agenda. You know, I travel the 17th Street Bridge almost every day, and I see the traffic that gets backed up in the morning or in the afternoon because it's shut down to two lanes. And so, I've also been getting calls to see when we're going to start working on that bridge. So I want to let the people know, we're listening to you, and so here's the first step in moving in that direction, and so thank you so much for putting this. I'm excited to see that this is coming to fruition, so thank you.
Thank you, council member. Resolution 2020-132 approves an agreement for the reservation of raw water and sale and delivery of treated water with Leroy Tools &amp; Jero Water Supply Corporation. This is one of the contracts, I think we talked about earlier, that this would be for blending water so that they can meet the EPA arsenic standards, and I would anticipate we will see a few more of these contracts as time goes on. This is a good move on our part to be the regional water supplier.
I really appreciate all the cooperative work that's gone on to put this together. It's been a long road to get here, and Judge Felton has played an important role in this, so has Tom Ray, our consultant, but Wiley has really led the effort for the city, and it's a, this is a good thing, not only to get the arsenic levels down within EPA standards, which is a really important thing, but also to preserve the aquifer by using, conjunctive use of water between groundwater and surface water. So thank you for all that work.
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution 2020-133 approves a change order with QualityW Contractors for additional construction services for the downtown waterline improvements projects. The contractor discovered one sewer line that needed to be reconnected and another one that needed to be replaced, and I think I've mentioned in the past, that alley is really crowded with underground utilities. So while we're there and around that project in downtown, we want to get everything that we uncover fixed, because it'd be good if we weren't back in there for about 100 years after now.
It would.
It's a very complex project, and I appreciate the utility department taking the steps to bring this additional work forward.
Yep.
And the ordinance is there are three today. The first ordinance is 2020-134. It's an emergency reading that authorizes the city manager to adopt and execute a meet and confer agreement with Waco Police Association, and I'd like to invite Assistant City Manager Bradley Ford to make a few comments on this. Bradley?
Thanks, Wiley. Mayor and council, on the agenda tonight is a four-year agreement with the Waco Police Association between the city and association. As you might be aware, negotiations on this agreement started about 13 months ago, so it's been a long road. We've recently just concluded. The Police Association has ratified the proposed agreement that's on your agenda, and I will note that the agreement is in alignment with the overall compensation strategy that the city manager's office has in place for all City of Waco employees. It'd really be a failure of me tonight not to highlight the work of those that served on the team at the table, on both sides. From the association's standpoint, we had Detective Ken Reeves, K-9 Handler Vern Darlington, Detective Charlie Connor, Detective Chris Jones, Commander Steve Mosley, and Clete Representative John Kerr. And the city's team, we had our Chief of Police Ryan Holt, Senior Assistant City Attorney Judith Benton, Assistant Director of Human Resources Lisa Wilcox, payroll supervisor Tracy Ramsey, and myself. And we're pleased to present this item to you this evening, and I'll take any questions that you have.
Bradley, congratulations to you and the team and to the Police Association team on getting together a really good contract that should work well for the city and for the police as we go forward, and getting a four-year contract is really a good thing to give us stability going forward. So thank you all for your work on that.
Thanks, Mayor.
Ordinance 2020-135 is the first reading to amend Chapter 13, licenses, permits, and business regulations, and Clint can cover this item in his work session presentation. The remaining ordinance is a second reading, and unless you have any questions, that concludes my report.
Any questions?
Nope.
Items council would like to remove from the consent agenda. Seeing none, the consent agenda will include Resolutions 2020-107 through 2020-133, unless a visitor card is received on a consent agenda item. I'll ask Wiley to introduce the next work session presentation.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Clint Peters, our Planning and Inspection Director, is here to discuss the public hearing and ordinance agenda items.
Thank you, Mayor. City council, we do have 13 public hearings today. The first one is dealing with subdivision plats. We just have the one subdivision plat for Landrith Garden Edition. This is a PUD. This is a 36.5-acre tract out on Chapel Road. This is part of the old Lehigh property that was sold recently to a developer with the majority of it in the city of Woodway, and then this piece in the city of Waco. This strangled piece was recently sold to Nate Landrith that owned the eight acres, and he has worked on a plan to develop that. City council did approve a concept PUD plan... City Council did approve a concept PUD plan for the thirty-six acres that includes a mix of single-family residential townhouse and multifamily. I can see the purple is single-family, the orange is a single-family or townhouse and then this blue area is multifamily. Council did approve this PUD with some conditions on it. One was to lower the density and then work on the layout of the road system and so they have done that and they are working through now with their preliminary plat. This is the preliminary plat. It does include one hundred and seventy-five single-family lots, which is about four point seven, eight units an acre, which is down from two hundred and twenty-two units from their concept plan. They've also reduced the size of the multifamily from six point nine six acres to six point zero six acres to comply with those conditions that were part of the PUD approval. They also submitted a traffic impact analysis, a drainage study and a utility study that determined that the property has adequate infrastructure to support this development. There is some road work happening along Chapel Road, improvements there because that narrows down the two lanes that will be required at time of final plating. They did increase the size of their drainage areas. They have some common, mixed, common drainage detention areas that will serve dual purpose for drainage plus common area amenities for the subdivision. You will see this again. It will come back with the final PUD and plats. They do intend to phase this and so you'll see each phase as this comes forward. Plan Commission did review all this and they've met all their conditions of their plat comment and so this is recommended for approval.
Clint, on this one, I remember one of the issues with this last time, that the initial plating allowed ingress and egress off of lost trails. Is that eliminated here in this one?
Yes, it does not include a connection to the western ridge of the vision.
It's all?
It's all off of chapel and then there's a street that connects in the back as well.
Just wanted to confirm.
That was just proposed. We never actually approved that.
That's correct.
Yeah. Including the multifamily, what's the overall density of the development when it all?
So, it's one hundred and seventy-five units for the single-family and then six acres, potentially up to twenty-five units an acre. I don't think they're going to be able to get there because they also have a limitation of two stories for the multifamily and in order to get to that density, they would have to do surface parking, I mean structured parking. I think their plan is to do surface parking. So, that density that was approved with the concept plan is a total of nine units an acre max and so with the reduction in the single-family and then the reduction of that multifamily piece, that will be well under the nine units an acre.
Because I know that was one of the conditions when we approved it originally, but we'll have that actual number when the final comes back forth.
That's correct.
Okay, and I'm glad to also see more provision being given for drainage and detention because drainage in this area is a significant problem just kind of all around, just with the development. I mean, you see rain afterwards, there's water draining out of Meadow Mountain for three or four days after the fact. So, I'm glad to see more provision and more focus being given to the potential drainage issues out here, too.
The next public hearing is a short-term rental type one at the property located at thirty-two oh one Windsor Avenue. This is a single-family home at the corner of Thirty-second and Windsor in the Dean Highland Neighborhood Association. This is a home that has a guest unit in the backyard that the owner's proposed to rent out. They will be in the home, stay in the home while it's being rented out and that's why it's a type one while the guests are there. No opposition on this one. They do have plenty of parking. It's just a one-bedroom unit that they're proposing to rent out.
Clint, can I ask a question about this one? Remind me of the rule of a short-term rental, like what is the closest that another short-term rental can exist?
So, for short-term rental type one, there is not a distance requirement.
Okay.
And the purpose of that, or the intent of that, is that the owner is still on-site, you know, at the home, so it doesn't change the character like a short-term rental two would be. For the short-term rental twos in the Bed and Breath Home States, it's a five-hundred-foot buffer between those.
But since this one is a short-term rental one, there's no X amount of feet that another one has to be separated?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
That's fair. There was no opposition on this and Plan Commission recommended approval of it. The next one is another short-term rental. This is a type two at the house at sixty-two oh five Sidney Drive. This is in the Avon Park subdivision out on Steinbeck Bend in the Bosqueville area of Waco, three-bedroom home. The owner does plan to rent it out to one group at a time. The owner's mother lives in Waco and will manage the property. It does have appropriate parking. We did receive two cards in opposition from this.
Hey Clint, I noticed that one of those cards was from residents of Franklin, Tennessee. Do we have any idea on why they were?
They, so we mail out notices to all the property owners, so they're a property owner.
There may be a landlord then?
Yeah.
Okay.
Landlord, there is a couple of vacant lots in this area as well. The next two are by the same applicant, the first one being at nineteen eighteen Laporte Drive for a short-term rental type two. This is in the Parkdale Neighborhood Association, just a block off Valley Mills Drive. Again, a three-bedroom home. The owner does intend to rent out all three bedrooms. The owner does live out of town and our ordinance does require that the operator reside or be in McLennan County and so we did put a specific condition in their conditions that the operator be in McLennan County. There's also, this is a three-bedroom, they do have to verify that there's room for three cars in this one-car garage in the driveway. No opposition on this one and Plan Commission recommended approval of it.
And Mayor and Council, Councilmember Sebby though, has filed an affidavit of substantial interest on this item.
And then the next one by the same applicant is at twenty-three twelve Glendale. This is in the Glendale Neighborhood Association near where New Road and Hillcrest come together. Another three-bedroom home, again, same issue with the operator and again, same issue with the driveway and one-car garage. You'll need to verify that that will fit, meet the parking ordinance for SDRs. No opposition on this one as well and Plan Commission did recommend approval of it. The next public hearing, Public Hearing Ninety-nine, is another short-term rental type two at twenty-one twenty-four Bosque Boulevard. This is a house that's going through renovation right now near the corner of Twenty-second and Bosque, actually right next door to, there's a little convenience store there. In the Singer Heights neighborhood, it's a four-bedroom home. They've actually added some additional parking in the back to meet the parking requirement and this is the picture of the home. You can see where they've added the additional parking in the back. Did a good job renovating the house. No opposition on this one and Plan Commission recommended approval of it as well.
So Clint, out of all these STRs, I just want to confirm, I guess I ask this every time, but I just see none of them, there was not sufficient opposition on any of one of these to trigger the supermajority vote, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thanks.
The next public hearing is two thousand twenty-one hundred. This is a public hearing to consider a resolution granting a special permit to Vision Quest National Limited for a Transitional Shelter Two, an O-two zoning district on property located at nineteen sixteen Seeley Avenue. This is about a nine-and-a-half acre tract at the corner of Seeley and Business Seventy-seven that is currently owned by Garden Bureau LLC and is under a contract to be sold to a nineteen sixteen Seeley LLC, whom per their application proposes to lease the property to Vision Quest National Limited to operate a facility that provides temporary shelter for thirty to ninety days for up to eighty-eight unaccompanied minors that cross the U.S. border without legal guardianship between the ages of eleven and eighteen years old through a contract with the Office of Refugee Resettlement of the Department of Health and Human Services. This was submitted and went through Plan Commission back in January. Staff did work with the applicant and gave them the requirements needed for approval of special permit. Y'all see those in your recommendations and all those, there's those conditions that are required by the ordinance to approve those. Staff and the Plan Commission both felt like the information provided with the application did not meet those criteria or those conditions needed for a special permit, so recommended for disapproval. Staff did also encourage the applicant to work through the Carver Neighborhood Association to get input from the neighbors before bringing the request to Plan Commission. They decided to move forward in a different direction and had an open house the Saturday before the Plan Commission to get input and they also went around the neighborhood and canvassed that by knocking on doors. They did provide a petition in favor of the request at the Plan Commission hearing and I provided those to you in your packets.
The Plan Commission had that as well?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
They did. At the Plan Commission hearing, we did have a large group from the Neighborhood Association in opposition as well as a group from the Waco Immigrant Alliance that spoke opposed to the request. There was no notices that were received in opposition. Like I said, the Plan Commission did recommend disapproval, which triggers the supermajority vote for City Council needed to approve. The applicant has requested a continuance for sixty days, which would move it to the April twenty-first meeting and there's a letter and a PowerPoint deck that they'll present tonight at the meeting with that request.
Clint, on this one, just the only question I have is that the special permit that they are requesting, I mean, the ordinance is pretty clear that there are three specific uses that this permit would cover, which is individuals recovering from drug or alcohol addiction, homeless individuals or families looking to obtain permanent housing or temporary shelter for victims of domestic abuse. I mean, this particular use doesn't seem to fall under any one of those categories. I mean, so even if, in the event that a special permit were granted, that's not one of the prescribed uses under the ordinance, so how would that work?
So, when we looked at this, that, you know, when you start going through all the different uses that are in the zoning ordinance, this was the use that closely, was the most closely fit, their type of use and so it's not exact, but this was the one that we felt like it fit under to move forward with the special permit. The next request is a request for a zone change from C-three to C-four, property located at fourteen oh one Franklin Avenue. This is at the corner of Franklin and South Fourteenth Street. This is in the mixed commercial area between downtown and the Austin Avenue Neighborhood They are, it's in the mixed use, the core land use designation. The C-four zoning allows for commercial, dense commercial uses, office and residential uses. There is C-four zoning in the area directly across the property from Franklin and that area has been transitioning more to C-four zoning. There's no opposition on this one and Plan Commission recommended approval of it. The next request is a bunch of different properties, actually thirteen properties owned by eight different owners along Dallas Street, Mann, Nathaniel McCoy and Rusk Avenue for a land use designation change on a portion of that from urban residential to medium-density residential office flex and then the rezone from R-one B and R-two to O-three. These are the properties here. There are, City Center Waco, who's the applicant that put this together, owns the properties along Nathaniel McCoy and Mann Street, which is about almost an acre of property. And then there are also six residential homes and five other vacant lots and this is in that area between Lipsits and Dallas Street and Elm Avenue and the Farmer's Market, that transitional area between some of the heavier commercial and industrial uses to where you get back into the residential area of Northeast Riverside Association. Here's the land use designation. You can see a lot of it's already that medium-density office flex. There's just this one portion that would be changing from urban residential to that office flex. And then here's the zoning where you have a mix of R-one B and R-two being requested to O-three. You already do have some O-three across the street, the back of Lulu Jane's property here, there's some vacant lots here and then some developed properties, the house that's been converted into an office and then a studio for pottery that's being built right now. The O-three does allow a mix of uses, including the single-family, duplex, townhouses, live-work units, limited commercial uses that would be restricted from seven AM to seven PM, office uses and also short-term rentals, the type one and type two. The applicant did meet with the Neighborhood Association and got support from the Neighborhood Association and we only had one card received back that had some questions and concerns about the change and then there was no opposition at the Plan Commission hearing and the Plan Commission did recommend for approval. And then here's some of the pictures of the area. This is a house along Rusk and Nathaniel McCoy and then these are the homes along Dallas Street that are part of the request.
So, in looking at this, I want to make sure that I'm clear in the thought process. This transitional zoning is, does allow for the type of housing options that we want to see developed within this area and this community. What I do want to ensure that my voice is heard and that the preservation of the neighborhoods within this community is kept as pure as possible. I appreciate this option and I admit that I have been worrisome to staff on this agenda item because I wanted to make sure that, you know, as we are discussing displacement and as we are discussing the advances of what shifting businesses and neighborhoods does to communities, that we are taking full account in the people who live and have lived there. Now, I think that, you know, because again, when you ask several questions, we get an opportunity to dig deep in thinking and thought and I, let me one say, I appreciate Clint for not hanging up the phone. And all the questions that came, I know you're in a meeting, but. One of the things that I think that I see in this is, and you know, because while we are not opposed to short-term rentals, of course, my preference is on, you know, STR ones that are owner-occupied because there are people who are still engaged in the community and it is not investors who live in wherever, just, you know, buying property and doing what they do, but it's people who still have ownership in the community. But what I think this can do is in this area, okay, so if it does become something that people buy and create short-term rentals in, it is a dedicated area in this transitional space, you know, that is with quick access to Elm Avenue corridor, with quick access to the growth and development on MLK, i.e. the memorial and the advancements that are coming along MLK and the Bledsoe and at all. So, I'm thinking that if, you know, I don't know if we can look at, because I believe that the community also wants to be kept whole and the neighborhood, the residents... that the community also wants to be kept whole, and the neighborhood, the residences, our ones and our twos want to be kept whole and congruent, and that is that we can count on them if there was opposition to advancing short-term rentals beyond to the north of Dallas, that I think that they would be able to speak on that. Am I right?
That's correct.
Okay. And I think that we, you know, or let me say me, you know, as a council member for this district, you know, would support keeping, you know, short-term rentals within this transitional zoning area, because that would allow, you know, live-work spaces to happen or potential growth of townhouses or that kind of thing to advance and develop if it ends up being, you know, it's not destined to be anything, but, you know, these are the things that it could be when it grows up. So I'm looking at that and how it would interact and engage within the community, and I think I can get behind this with the understanding that, as a whole, the neighborhoods within, the established neighborhoods within this community would be preserved. So, there.
Councilmember Bearfield, I'll echo your concerns, because that's when I first saw this, I was, you know, this area is so great right now, it's percolating with development. If you go there, it's everything going vertical, the hotel there and the condo. This is a very exciting part of our city right now. And I know that we are, this council, I know is, wants to avoid the worst elements of displacement and gentrification. And when I first saw this, I guess I was thinking, you know, we've heard the need for housing in this neighborhood and the right kind of housing, and when I saw that we were changing residential lots to convert, basically to allow commercial there, I started, it seemed counterintuitive to me initially. And I just, I want to make sure that we are thoughtful and sensitive to how we are approving these kind of changes. And maybe I just need to know the, maybe the master plan on what, where are we now across Dallas Street? We're not going to ever change that? I just, I just want some sense of the bigger picture on this, because again intuitively, as I look at it, everything I'm hearing in the community is, you know, let's keep, clepe the neighborhood, as it's to echo Andrea.
Yeah. Yep. So I guess all I can say on that is that, you know, our discussions with the Neighborhood Association, you know, is that the single-family zoning north of Dallas, it, you know, that would be the area that they would oppose any changes to zoning, more intense zoning on that. And I think from a staff point, you know, from going back to the Imagine Waco Plan and the comprehensive plan and just the, you know, working with the Neighborhood Association, staff would recommend disapproval of changes to higher-intensity zoning north of Dallas Street, where you get back into the residential areas. You know, things change over time, but that would, that would be our stance on that currently.
And O-three still does allow for residential?
Yes, and the type of residential that can be beneficial to stabilizing and revitalizing neighborhoods, because it does provide that, the extra types of residential that you see more in urban cores, like the townhouse and the live-work units and, you know, duplexes and small lot, single-family and those types of single-family.
It's for that reason that I think this makes sense. I agree with Councilmember Bearfield, but to your point about housing, I think that housing is still available to be developed with this change, and I think it's going to be in a way that could be consistent with the goals for this particular spot in our city.
And I mean, looking back at all the plans, even back to the Elm Avenue corridor plan of O-two, you know, those type of live-work housing and townhouses have always been on the agenda. You know, I, I'm hoping to see, because housing is what we need.
Right.
You know, we need somewhere within the urban core that, you know, your growing professionals, your retirees who want smaller, you know, footprints, I mean, all of the things, you know, first-time home buyers, those are the things that we want to see advanced. I mean, as we are building equity within our economic development perspectives, you know, we have to consider those housing options as well. I mean, you know, how, every story in the past several months have been dealing in the housing crisis, and it is real, and it is happening here. But we need to make sure that we're, you know, feasibly fiscally responsible to our constituencies in how we make those things available in space. And I think that with providing an opportunity for options, that is key, but with the clear understanding that neighborhood preservation is a priority, because, you know, this is deep longstanding, you know, roots, and, you know, it's hard to kind of unearth that kind of tree. But I appreciate the insight and the ability to make, make these things plain.
All right, so the next case, public hearing one oh three, is a rezoning from C-five to O-two at properties located at twenty-one fourteen and twenty-one sixteen South Eleventh Street. These are some vacant lots just north of La Salle in the area, student housing area around Baylor University. The area has been transitioning from commercial and industrial uses to more residential and service uses that support the campus. O-two zoning is the dominant zoning in the area, and you can see by the pictures, there's O-two development around the two vacant lots. There's no opposition on this one, and the Plan Commission recommended approval. The next one, public hearing.
And Mayor, Councilmember Mika has filed an affidavit of substantial interest on this item.
Is a change from O-three to O-two at properties at twenty-one sixteen, twenty-one twenty-two Columbus Avenue. Again, this is that area, transition area between downtown and Austin Avenue residential area. See, there is a mix, this is again, an area that's got a lot of O-three and O-two zoning in it, that's got residential uses and office and mixed commercial. They are asking for O-two here that would give them a little bit more density than the current O-three zoning would allow. There is O-two across the street and behind the property, and again, that area's got, as you can see, it's got a mix of O-three, O-two, and C-two zoning, which are all mixed-use zoning districts. No opposition on this one, and Plan Commission recommended approval. And you can see the property here, and this is actually, the property next to it is an example of O-three zoning that, a residential use and O-three zoning that has townhouses on it. So that's, that's a permitted use in the O-three district. And then the O-two would allow similar types of uses, but it would allow a little bit more density for multifamily and would limit commercial uses, it would just be residential and office. See the property here. The next public hearing, one oh five, Dylan back in here.
While he does that, Councilmember and Mayor, Councilmember Sabido has filed an affidavit of substantial interest on this item, one oh five.
This is a request from the Waco Arts Center for abandonment of an alley, a portion of an alley known as Burnett Avenue on South Eighth and Ninth Street between Ross Avenue and Clay Avenue. A little bit of background on this, the Arts Center has recently purchased a commercial building here and then a home and some vacant lots here, and they're in the process of redeveloping that for their new headquarters, campus site. And they're working to try to consolidate all their properties into one campus, and this, this street alley, alleyway bisects those two properties. So originally, they had requested for the whole alley between Eighth and Ninth to be abandoned. It went to Plan Commission in December, and there was a couple of groups from the neighborhood that opposed that, that were concerned about access to their property. So they, they continued, the Plan Commission continued that and let the, allow for some time for the applicant to work with those property owners. And what they did is they came back with a revised request just to abandon the southern portion, this area in yellow that's adjacent to Ninth, and leave the alley open between their property and a property that's not owned by them, actually, it's owned by the church, leave it in its current condition. And here's a concept of what they're proposing to do, and so this area in yellow would be the area that they are requesting to abandon, and then they would incorporate that into their parking lot. One of the reasons they're wanting to do this is because there's going to be a lot of foot traffic between their offices, and I think they have some studios here in their main building, including some children that would be going back and forth. So they want to make this where it's not, where it's still a through, through way, but not at high speeds. And so what they're proposing to do is build a new access way through their parking lot and grant an easement, so you'll, the public will still be able to go from Eighth Street to Ninth Street. They would just meander through their parking lot instead of a straight shot. And then there was also concern from this property owner here down the street on Ninth Street about potentially losing their access to that street for future development that potentially could be accessed, built access to the back of their property. So they have been working with that property owner, and to my understanding, they have granted an easement that would leave the current access the way it is now, and that this property owner would still have the potential to build an access point to this alleyway or ingress egress easement. And here's a, here's, I'm sorry, here's a picture of that. The church also had concern, but removing this portion of it, they will still have, you know, unlimited access to their, their parking lot that goes from Ninth Street over to Burnett Alley. So I believe they've addressed all the concerns, and so the Plan Commission did recommend approval of this with two conditions. There is a sewer line that runs across that alleyway that we'll have to retain an easement for, and then to provide that ingress egress easement with the new alignment of the connection from the existing alley over to Ninth Street. And then the last public hearing.
Clint, I had one quick question.
Yes, sir.
In the, in the Plan Commission meeting, there was, as you pointed out, some opposition. Can you flip forward, yeah, there from the crosshatch landowner, right? There was just some clarification needed on his access to the back of that property.
That's correct.
And it seemed that all the parties were committed to working that out. And do you know what the status of?
My understanding, that's been worked out with the granting of this easement to this property owner, so they'd still have access across the Arts Center's property to get to this public alley ingress egress easement.
Okay, thanks.
And then the last public hearing is a request for a landmark designation at property located at seven sixteen East Pecan Avenue. This is a home that was built in eighteen ninety-nine or earlier, depending on what documentation you looked at, that Nancy Grayson has bought and is in the process of restoring. It is a priority too. Nancy thinks it's the only single-wall construction home still left in Waco, which I will agree with her on that one, and this was recommended by the Plan Commission and the Historic Landmark Commission for a designation. And that's all the public hearings. We, I did want to go over, since we've tabled this twice, the ordinance changes to the STR license ordinance, go through all four proposed changes, and I give you a little bit of information on the survey that we did and the feedback we got from those. So we are proposing four amendments to our short-term rental license ordinance. The first one is extending the license period from one to two years. This is actually coupled with some initiatives that we're doing that don't require ordinance changes, one being hiring a third-party enforcement software company to help us with enforcement of STRs, and then also creating a online application submitted process for STR license. We felt like with those two things, as well as just our experience over the last two and a half years with processing license, that the one-year renewal is not needed, and we're requesting to change that to two years. And you can see here, this, we did a survey through Survey Monkey that we sent out to all the STR operators, as well as the Neighborhood Association on this question. We got one hundred and fourteen responses back with eighty-five percent in agreement with this change. And again, the, we also asked the two questions, they don't, these don't require ordinance change, but I thought I'd show you these with, about the implementation of a third-party enforcement software, and about seventy-seven percent of the one hundred and seventeen responses were in favor of that. And then online license application, ninety-seven percent of the one hundred and thirty-two responses were in favor of that. The second ordinance change is to extend the five-hundred-foot buffer requirement for short-term rentals type two and bed-and-breadthest homestay establishments. That currently only applies in the R-one zoning districts to the R-two zoning districts. This was more split from our responses, had about a hundred and eight, and it was about fifty-one, a little over fifty-one and forty-eight percent split. But again, I think that is mainly kind of split down the responses from the operators and then the responses from the neighborhood associations. I do think, based on our responses, originally, we sent it out to the, the operators, had about sixty responses, and then when we sent it back out to the Neighborhood Associations as well, we got about fifty more. So I do think there was a little, leaned a little bit more to operators that responded to this, so I see this as a good split, and to me, this is a good proposal. And the reason why we're proposing this is you can see on this map, so all the yellow area is the single-family, and that's where the buffer requirement applies currently. And you can see all these orange areas are two zoning, but the majority of these areas are single-family neighborhoods. And, you know, the, the input that we've got from neighborhood associations and just, we feel like that those, those areas, you know, need that same protection that we're providing the single-family zoning that, for the R-two zoning, because they have the same characteristics from a neighborhood standpoint, they're majority single-family neighborhoods. And you can see, these, these little blue areas are licensed STRs, and you can see the blues are the five-hundred-foot, so those would be the areas that would be protected where new applications could not apply. The red are current licensed and R-two zoning, and if this ordinance was approved, then those five-hundred-foot buffers would apply in those areas as well. The third change is removing the on-street parking prohibition for STRs located on streets classified as a collector arterial, where on-street parking is not restricted. Currently, we require a parking space per rentable room off-street for all STRs on all streets, and the issue we're having on, especially on collectors and arterials, is where you have a lot of on-street parking in mixed areas, it's hard to enforce that, because you have, already have a lot of on-street parking for different uses, and really, the STRs, the only use that's restricted from using that on-street parking. So we are proposing that that be changed only for properties on collectors or arterials to allow on-street parking. They would still have to meet their parking requirement, so if they have a three-bedroom home, they're still going to have to have three off-street parking spaces, but they, the tenants would be allowed to park on the street as well. We got a hundred and seven responses on this, and it was eighty-five fifteen. This is a map, and it's got a lot of lines on it, but the greens and the reds and pinks are our collectors and arterials kind of in the core, that this, that these, these would be the streets, STRs on these streets would apply to. We did, we did look at it from the existing licensed STRs, there are thirty-eight that this ordinance would impact. Most of those are on Fourth Street, Fifth Street, Austin Avenue, the area between Twenty-Fifth and downtown, Clay Avenue in Washington is about eighty percent of that, thirty-eight are on those streets. And then there's a couple other streets, Wooded Acres, Herring, Primrose, and Singer that, and Twenty-Fifth Street that have some STRs that would be impacted by. and Singer that, and 25th Street that have some STRs that would be impacted by this change.
And Clint, I don't know if you can answer this, but out of those 38 that will be affected, any idea of those that are in favor or against these changes?
I didn't have that broken down in the survey. Sorry about that.
No worries, thank you.
And then the last change deals with our STR3s. Currently, STR3s are short-term rentals in multifamily dwellings. Currently, we have a maximum of five STRs in any multifamily building. This, this proposed change would exempt STR type three properties from the five-unit maximum if the following criteria are met. And the first being that the building is made up of individually owned units where each individual owner or person with influential interest in legal entity operates no more than five units as a short-term rental. And we, we defined owner and influential interest. The second condition being that the property is located in the downtown zoning overlay district. The third being that the property is zone C4. And then here's a map showing those, those two where you have the C4 zoning and the downtown overlay. So they have to be located in both of those, meet that first condition. And then we've added a fourth condition based on some input that we had from the last meeting, that the applicant provides written verification from association governing the individual units, including the condo association, owners association, or management company, that the condo association owners association has some, some sort of short-term rental document that they're allowed in the building, that all the owners have been notified and that the association has some written policies dealing with the short-term rentals and common areas of that association or condo. And so we've added this one from the last meeting and we feel like this addresses the concerns that were pointed out by city council from the last meeting. This, this was the survey results, this was before that last condition was added on there, but 70% were in favor of this change and 30% were opposed to this one. And I'd be happy to answer any questions on the proposed changes on this.
And Mayor and Council, Councilmember Mika filed an affidavit of substantial interest on this item.
And I did want to point out one more thing. We also met with the Northeast Riverside Neighborhood Association and Brook Oaks Neighborhood Association and went over all these changes and they were supportive of these four changes.
Any questions, comments?
Just, yeah, John, the, the last little set of changes are really kind of coming from my request. I think you addressed everything I was concerned about, which is basically the representation that the short-term rentals are allowed there and that there's been some disclosure to the owners of those condos of what to do and when somebody shows up to use it. Particularly safety and security in common areas is what I was trying to cover there and I think the drafting there was great.
Thank you.
No, I'll only add that, I mean, I think most, I think these make sense and this whole, this whole thing is still requiring additional attention. And I think these changes are iterative and our next crack at it, I would encourage us to strongly look at some sort of solution that would get them off of our agendas, both for staff's sake and our own sake. So, but I'm fine with these. It's again, progressive.
Thank you.
Mayor and Council, our next presentation is from Chris Dyer. He's the president and CEO of the Dr. Pepper Museum and Free Enterprise Institute. He's here today to give you an update on the Dr. Pepper Museum, the tourist numbers, upcoming renovations, exhibitions, events, and future plans.
Thank you for having me. And I know you'll have a really packed agenda, so I'll be brief. And I just pushed the left on the, clicked the button to go through. All right, well, thank you for having me. We always start out with our vision. We have a really big vision. We want to be the finest museum in the world, devoted to telling the story of the soft-drink industry. So I always start all my presentations like that because it's very important because we have some lofty goals. We have a long way to go, but it's an exciting time in downtown Waco. As you can see, our visitation is doing really well. Everybody can imagine, I can't really see the bottom of it, but you can imagine what happened in around 2015, 16, when our visitation doubled. It was a bit of surprise for everybody downtown with Magnolia around, but as you can see, we've, we've had a steady stream. We, we projected about 170,000 this year and we, we were right on the ball. We were at about 174. So we're seeing a constant positive trend when, you know, there's been some reports that it's, you know, it slowed down a little bit. It hadn't slowed down for us and I think it's a testament to everybody getting together and advertising and working with Todd and his crew and Fiona and her crew. So we have a great, great team down there promoting downtown. We're projecting we'll be a little over 180 this year. I think it's already been a record January for us, so we just hope it continues to go. No complaints here. The one thing that we have figured out is our revenues have gone up significantly as well, now that we're kind of learning how to, how to handle the crowds and give people a great experience. I always show these maps. This is just kind of a snapshot at the beginning of the year. We're learning how to track data a lot more effectively, but we ask people from, you know, volunteer where you come from. So this is just a map that we have up randomly, so you can kind of see, start to see the trends. We have a lot of I-35 corridor, it's very exciting. A lot of east and west coast, a lot of Florida. I mean, we have every state covered and this is just about a quarter of the year, so it's really exciting for us. And I'll also mention that one problem that we're trying to solve is we're unique visitors. So our 174,000, you can bet about 165-plus or one-time visitors from elsewhere. So that's great, but we also want to make sure that we're better connecting to the community. And this is again, this is that kind of quarterly snapshot. This isn't everybody that comes in, but we're, we're pretty much covered everywhere. I mentioned, as we were kind of running through the presentation earlier, that we've had, we had a group of Nigerians standing outside the gate waiting for us to open. It's, it's really amazing and, you know, we've got New Zealand covered, so I think we have everybody in New Zealand attending. So it's, it's a lot of fun. And again, a lot of these are unique visitors that don't know anything about Waco other than Magnolia and they don't know about Dr. Pepper. This was a big deal for us because we, we reached our 2,000,000th visitor on our birthday in May. So this is actually a family of Fort Hood and, from Fort Hood, veterans and we gave away a year's supply of Dr. Pepper. That's debatable what that really is, right? But it was 365, so, you know, we believe in moderation. A lot of fun for us and we, we, we knew that it, our 500th guest, that we would reach our 2,000,000th. Well, we were kind of sweating that we wouldn't make it that day and we ended up about 1,300 guests on the day. So, you know, we're, we're doing pretty well. Another thing that really helped us push our visitation over the top and then really add to our value proposition and our business model was we now offer free Dr. Pepper with admission. I felt that was really important when I came in, in 2018 and, because that's what everybody wants, right? And we didn't increase our admission, a lot of people don't know, is that we pay for that product. And so we gave away approximately 140,000 Dr. Peppers this year. So in the coming year, we hope to give away 170. We'll see how it goes. I think it's important to note that Game Day came to our location. You know, Waco obviously got a lot of coverage on that, but, you know, we got the trophy at our location. It was great and we're, actually, I think it might have been Bradley that recommended it. We're, we're working with college basketball Game Day right now, so we're hoping that that will pan out, you know, and we'll get the win, obviously, but we want to see if we can do floats there. So I don't know if you guys know, but Dr. Pepper is not just Dr. Pepper. It has been Dr. Pepper Snapple Group, it's been Cadbury Sweeps. So Curia currently owns Dr. Pepper and I put this slide up not to promote Dr. Pepper, but to say that, you know, we are, we, we're custodians of their history. We're not a corporate museum, we're a separate 501(c) nonprofit. Dr. Pepper's very, they're very involved with what we do, but we plan our own course and they're about 2.5% of our overall budget. So that's something important to note. We thank a lot of them, but, you know, we're a separate entity. We have big plans for 2020. I don't want to forget, but Hector is a new board member, so that's all I have. That's our big plan. But he came on and, and is really going to help us better connect to the community. I think that's extremely important and we're really committed to having a board that does represent the community. And I don't know that we always have, but we're trying. And some of our big plans include, if you've been out on Mary, you know there's a lot going on on Mary Street. This is the side of our building. You can see our smile or your, our scar, whichever you want to call it from the tornado, but you can see our building's kind of dingy. You know, it's just environmental conditions, that sandy mortar that we had, it's kind of degrading a bit, but it shows you a little closer. It doesn't look like much, but the building's just, it needs a little TLC. We have some organic growth in the grout, so this, this is a couple more photos as you can see here, and I'm probably bothering people with the mouse there. But, you know, there are parts of our building where you could actually put your hand into. We're a national registered property. You know, that's, we want to preserve that building forever, so that's really what we're focused on. And you'll see this crane and notice we didn't close down Mary Street. We didn't have to file a permit. Our goal is to try to not close down the street, so they're doing the whole, this is the Artesian Manufacturing and Bottling Company building. This is where Dr. Pepper was made. And so the masons started about a week and a half ago during the cold snap, so it's probably the worst job in the world, but it's real, they have to be real tedious. We're cleaning out a lot of our joints and replacing them and we're going to match the color. We're following preservation standards on the state and federal levels. So it makes everything more difficult, but we want to do it the right way. I show you this picture because we love history, but also if you're familiar with our dock on the side of the building, we do a lot of our tours. Outside there, we bring guests out. It's a very important focal point of our museum and is historically, you can see the train track was there. It's still there today, but our dock's looking a little rough. So you'll see after we get through with the mortar work and the, the brick work, we'll replace this dock and make it look a lot more historically accurate and it'll be a lot less maintenance, but it wasn't that color originally, as you can imagine. This is our cupola, it's kind of hard to see, but, you know, we get battered by the weather pretty, pretty good. And with our original restoration, that's the last time the cupola's been touched. It's not because of neglect that it's kind of degrading, it's just Texas weather. So as you can see, you know, we, we have a lot of work to do. So the cranes will come out, we'll pluck the cupola off, and you don't do this but every 25 years because it's such an ordeal. You know, it's a, you bring a crane in and do it and it's a, so that will happen in the next, I'm not going to say the time because, you know, I'll push construction back another two months, but we're, we're moving forward. And, and we couldn't have done this project without the city, City Center Waco, the Summerlee Foundation and our, our, our private donors. We, it's about $150,000 project, but what we can do when this, by the city facade grant funds, we will receive about $45,000. It's really important because we can leverage that for matching funds and that's what all funders want to see. So we greatly appreciate you guys for doing that. The other things that we're doing, this is our historic bottling room. You can imagine what the conditions were like working in there. No air conditioning, you're standing on a board to keep your feet out of syrup and water. You know, it was, it was pretty rough in there, but this is kind of our heart and soul of the museum. So if you've been in it, it hasn't been changed for a while, since I was in school, and that's been many years. So we're really looking to update that and make this just a really, a destination location to really wow people. But we got to stay true to the historic nature of the building, so we're going to have to take a lot of layers of paint off the floor. So we just can't ever close because we're open seven days a week and being closed one day in this town, you know, you can lose a lot of revenue, which is important. And this is just kind of a testament to what we're doing in there and the quality that you'll be seeing moving forward. So we really want to be the best and the premier location in Waco. The other fun thing that we're doing is, this is a photo of the Thirst Aid Station. You will see a Dr. Pepper Museum float truck coming very shortly. It's a long time coming, but we're going to put it on the road and, and the way we're set up as an organization, we have an enterprises arm, so we can do entrepreneurial things like that. So that's what I'm really, that's a lot of what brought me back to Waco, because we have a lot of creative flexibility with that. Another big thing for us and I think the community is that we can now officially brand our location in our museum as Original Home of Dr. Pepper, Original Home of Big Red. This is a really big deal because we are the original home of Dr. Pepper and we are the original home of Big Red, but we're not corporate. So we've really, one of my focuses has been working on licensing agreement with Dr. Pepper Corporate and it's a big deal so that we can help brand the community even further. A lot of people don't even know about Big Red, which blows my mind.
I tell everybody.
This is our store, the other thing we're doing, I'm trying to roll as fast as I can on this, we are opening a new store on our facility. As you see here, this is our corner and everybody's kind of familiar with where our store is. We do about a million dollars of business out of here a year. This is 500 square feet. We figured we'd double the square feet and, you know, the math may work out, but we brought in a summer from Fox and Gray who's managing all of our retail, our buying, the creation of our merchandise to make it really, we have unique stuff that nobody else has. And so that this will really help sustain our organization in the long run. So we're really excited about that and it will be open by spring break or people are going to be in trouble. Me included. And with that said, I appreciate your support and we do have Lady Bear's commemorative bottles. They're, it's crazy. So we're really excited about that, but we love partnering with you guys and, and we look forward to what 2020's going to bring.
First and foremost so much for your presentation. You know, I was privy to this information before it was presented to council, but I really want to say thank you for all of your work, your vision for the museum, for the organization. I know you go above and beyond what is required and asked of you. I know your staff is just excited to help the community out and to be a service to the community and so congratulations on the many, many milestones that you have completed in your tenure here while, from the 2,000,000th visitor to your, your visitors that are going up, the number of visitors, unique visitors, and that, that's very important to say, unique visitors that are going up every single year. All the remodeling that's taking place, all of the growth that's happening financially with the organization. While there are many great partners, it is also a tribute to your leadership, to your vision and so congratulations to you, sir, for, for just a wonderful, wonderful job. And I will say this to everyone in the room and everyone watching via online, if you've never been to the Dr. Pepper Museum, please take a tour of it. It is definitely something that is, it's for the entire family. Kids of all ages will enjoy it. If it can entertain my five and two-year-old that are everywhere, it can definitely entertain anyone. And so once again, congratulations to you and, and keep up the good work that you're doing in your own backyard. Thank you.
Thank you. It's easy when you have a good foundation. You know, the red carpet was rolled out for me, so a lot of good people before me that kind of set the stage, but yeah, it's a great opportunity. So thank you.
It's an important time for our tourist stakeholders to be strategic and you're doing that, your organization is doing that, and I think the city of Waco is benefiting from that. So thanks for this work, it's very exciting. I'm excited to take advantage of that float truck.
And that sales tax that we're collecting. I always forget to mention that we're collecting some sales tax, so we're, yes, and the float truck is going to be amazing, so I appreciate that.
Where will that be located? At your building or mobile?
It'll be somewhere in town, yeah. Yeah, we may, we're still trying to work out the deal on that. But yeah, it, we will, we want to have two ultimately. We'll have one to kind of serve overflow, but we want to have one for events and things like that. But we, we have some ideal locations that we want to be.
Very cool. That's exciting. I appreciate that creativity and innovation on the enterprise opportunities, so, really cool.
It's a lot of fun.
Chris, I like all the guys. Great presentation and, and just as Waco becomes kind of a tourism destination, a first-tier tourist destination, it takes people like you with that commitment, creativity. I mean, attendance is coming up as, as sort of a ripple effect of everything that's going on in Waco, but you're reacting to that by bringing in free Dr. Pepper, you know, float truck, branding, the new museum store. I think it takes people, as Dylan pointed out, keeping up with this tourism to, they want to come back again and not just have, check that off the list.
Right, you know, museums don't survive if visitors don't continue to. The zoo has done a great job with that, so has the Mayborn, and that's what we're trying to achieve as well.
Thanks, thanks for the great presentation.
Great job, Chris. Two things, well, two and a half things. One, I want to appreciate your honesty and your commitment to connecting with the community. I think it's important that we realize, I mean, we as a community, though it's there, really get, you know, a full eye, full-opened experience of what really get, you know, a full eye, full opened experience of what an asset we have in the Dr. Pepper Museum. So that you have intentionally set forth an effort to connect is important and we, it's appreciated. Secondly, your staff is fantastic. It's, it's just from, from both sides of this coin. From this side as council and you know, my side, my professional side, working with you. There's some just really bright, really innovative people who work in that building. And I can't wait to see what's coming in the future, just from what I've known already. So that half is coupled with, to, to include. The exhibits that I have seen in the five years that I've been back in Waco are amazing. And they look at just so many different perspectives of not just Dr. Pepper, but the industry as a whole. And it's just things you never would have thought about and known. I mean, like I love the, the current exhibit about the not so successful.
Failures, yeah.
Failures of the soda industry. I mean, we grew up in the age of New Coke. So I mean, you know, it was, it was pretty fantastic.
You're showing your age now.
Hey, hey. These grays are showing my age. But I just think it's fantastic and I like the, the, the fresh perspective that is always in. I mean, the, the exhibit on women, the exhibit with the spirits industry. I mean, all of those things just kind of say, huh, I didn't know you could do that at Dr. Pepper Museum. Or, oh, I didn't know that. But you know, and that just keeps the conversation going about how we integrate, you know, history with tourism, with marketing, with economic development, all of those things. Cause it's all keeping the train moving. So I appreciate your, your commitment to that.
Thank you. We're, we're trying. So.
Yeah, I'll just reiterate all of that and just commend you for your vision, your leadership and your stewardship of a true Waco icon. And looking forward to everything that's next. And I'm, I'm on brand. So.
You're on brand. You're on point right there. So.
Ditto to everything that our council members have said. Great presentation. The museum is really thriving under your leadership and just keep up the great work. Appreciate you all allowing us to hold our first retreat on equitable services and strategic economic development.
We're always there. We love hosting y'all.
Thank you. We, we enjoy being at your, at your, at your place. Thank you very much.
Keep it up. You. Next council meeting.
That's right.
Hector and I would normally have Big Reds, but we're trying to do better.
Hector's in the summer though.
Thanks, Chris. Mayor and Council, our next presentation is a discussion of the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report for the fiscal year ending September 30th, 2019. We have Diane Award, CPA and shareholder with Jane's, Rittenmeyer, Boyd and Terrell. And then our Chief Financial Officer, Janice Andrews. Welcome ladies.
Thank you, Wiley. It's good to be here. Well, we've had all the fun stuff, so now we've got to do the accounting stuff. Oh joy. But I appreciate y'all listening and, and inviting me here. I will tell you, we have met with the Budget and Audit Committee and that they have gone over it. So my remarks today will be very high level and, and brief. As we've done in the past, I just want to talk about the audit for the city, which was for the year ended September 30th, 2019. And the results of those procedures. We'll go over some financial observations. And then we will also review internal control and compliance because the city does receive federal and state funding. Always remind council that the financial statements are the responsibility of management. And that our responsibility as your auditors is to conduct the audit in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards. And as I mentioned, because you receive federal and state funding, we follow government auditing standards. As a reminder, we do examine evidence that supports the amounts in the CAFR. We evaluate the accounting principles that are used by management. And then we look at significant estimates that are inherent in those financial statements. And then we evaluate the overall financial statement presentation. As in the past, the city does have multiple opinion units that we report on. We've listed them on the screen for you and there have been no changes to those from last year. So we've completed our audit and I'm happy to report to you that we've issued our opinion. It is a clean opinion, an unmodified opinion. It's what you would expect to see. And it's on the screen and it does state that the financial statements do present fairly in all material respects, the financial position of the city at September 30th, 2019. And then the changes in financial position for the year then ended. As I mentioned, we do test compliance with laws and regulations. That compliance is the responsibility of management. We follow uniform guidance for federal laws and uniform grant management standards for the state of Texas for state grants. We examine evidence that supports the city's compliance with requirements that have a direct and material effect on a major federal or state program. So also I'm happy to report to you that we've completed our audit procedures for compliance and that the city complied in all material respects with those direct and material compliance requirement for each major federal and state program. As in the past, we want to look at some financial highlights. This first slide talks about the financial position of the city at September 30th, 2019. That slide shows a, a healthy trend there. That's what you're looking for. You're looking for increases, which is a healthy financial position for the city. The bar on the right is your business type activities. They wound up with $328.9 million of, of net position at the end of the year. As a reminder to you, those business type activities for the city include water, wastewater, solid waste, airport, convention center, Ranger Hall of Fame, the zoo, transit and golf. And then all the other activities of the city are in the dark blue column to the left, which are your governmental activities and that net position is $324 million at the end of the year. One other area we always want to talk about is general fund, fund balance. General fund, fund balance at the end of the year ended at 87.3 million. And again, we just look at the trend there, which is a healthy trend. You've seen a general fund, fund balance grow from a little over $50 million up to 87.3 million at the end of the year. So what are we going to do with this fund balance? So this slide here kind of talks about or shows you the different areas of fund balance that the city has. As you can see for 2019, you had non-spendable, which is primarily your inventories of about 970,000. 1.3 million of the fund balance is restricted for municipal information. 13.6 million is committed for economic development through the Economic Development, Waco and McLennan County Economic Development Corporation. And then you can see there's about $40 million that's assigned. Of course, this is what management has assigned and has reviewed in detail with the Budget and Audit Committee. But the most significant items in there is assignments for capital projects is 25.5 million, up 8.1 million from the year before. And then economic development has an assignment of 8.3, which is up a million dollars from the previous year. And then the others also went up about 1.7 million. So I get you to your unassigned fund balance for the city at September 30th at 30.5 million dollars. The next slide reviews that 30.5 million dollars of unassigned fund balance as it compares to the city's approved financial policy. As you're aware, the city did change that policy slightly. It's now a minimum of 20% of budgeted expenditures. And we can see there as the slide shows that that 30.5 million does meet that financial policy. The next slide reviews budget versus actual for the general fund for the city. Actual revenues where the city were 143.9 million compared to a budget of 134.3 million. The most favorable, favorable variances were sales tax, which was 3.6 million to the good and investment income, which was 1.7 million to the good. And that's generally due to a conservative budgeting policy. Expenditures came in at 117.5 million compared to a budget of 130 million. That's about 90% of the budget that was, that was expended for the year. And as we're getting ready for the presentation, we thought it'd be good for Janice to kind of go over a little more detail of the positive variances there.
Thank you, Diana. We actually had almost every department operating under budget. Very strong operational scrutiny during the year to allow us to close in such a good position. We had almost, we had every category coming in under budget. Salaries and benefits for general fund were about 3.1 million of that 12 million. We did have professional technical services comprising about 4 million of that number. A big part of that was, as Diana mentioned, the economic development. You saw how the committed fund balance had increased. We had underruns in expenditure primarily due to timing. We have a lot of commitments for that, but depending on when that money's actually spent is when it will go through our financial statements. We also had 2.7 million dollars of encumbrances. Those were commitments that had been made, but were not reflected as expenditures for the audit. So those were in your assigned fund balance for the next year. So all in all, it allowed us to add favorably to the fund balance and give council flexibility for utilization of those assignments in the future. And also very favorably, particularly with the rating folks, on the increase in the unassigned criteria for our financial policies. So we appreciate all the hard work that the departments did in managing their budgets during the year.
Thank you, Janice. Yeah, as you can see, so revenues over expenditures wound up actual 26.3 million compared to a budgeted amount of 4.2. As in the past, the city does fund certain enterprise fund activities. They budgeted to spend about 10.6 million. They only had to spend about nine. Biggest variance there was in transit, in which there was 1.4 million that they thought they were going to have to transfer over there, but they didn't have to. So you can see that comes down to the net change in fund balance of 17.2 compared to a budgeted use of 6.4. For the major water, major enterprise funds, water fund, wastewater fund and solid waste, the city does have a, a policy that states working capital to ratio should be at least 30%. You can see for 2019, water came in at 58%, wastewater at 63, at 65% and solid waste at 73%, well above the minimum of 30%. Solid waste did decrease, but that's due to a use of cash for certain capital outlay during the year. As I mentioned, we do review internal controls as part of the audit. And I'm happy to report to you, there were no material weaknesses in internal control. Also, there were no findings related to internal control, related to major federal and state award programs that were tested. And as I've mentioned, there were no findings that were needed to, no instances of material non-compliance that would, needed to be reported to you for the test work as a result that we did for the major federal and state programs. So those are my prepared remarks. If anyone has any questions, I'll be happy to take those at this time.
No questions on my end, Diana, but I do want to thank you and your team for your work. It is great news to hear the standing that the city of Waco is in. And also want to thank Janice and her team and Wiley and just the senior management team here for all of their work and efforts throughout the years to make sure that we have these type of ratings and standings once the audit is completed. And I think that's just kudos to them for, for just being so diligent and being so cognizant of, of making sure that things are going appropriately throughout the year. So thank you to, to the team for, for making this work. And, and also Diana to you, for you, for your presentation and just giving us the great news today. It is always, always, always welcome. So thank you.
You're welcome. It's my pleasure to be here.
Yeah, I'll just, yeah, I'll just reiterate and I mean, you know, a report like this and the work that you do is not something that happens all at once, but is just a culture that Janice and her staff and management as well has cultivated over many years. And there's, you know, 300 and something pages in here. But I mean, the easiest way to reflect it is again, we borrowed for 20 years at 2%. And I mean, and that, and that shows the, the, well, I mean, the confidence and the trust that outside investors, that those who know these things, that evaluate cities and evaluate us and look into this in detail, understand the strong fiscal position that we're in and the prudent financial management that both staff and this council have overseen for several years and will continue to oversee. And so I appreciate all your work. I mean, I know it's, it's a, it's a task and it takes many hours. But it's, it's always good to, to maintain the confidence in, in what we see and confidence in our operations. And I just, I really want to commend everybody involved because this, once again, reflects just a very, very great condition on, on, for the city's finances in general.
Janice and her staff work very hard and they're always happy to see us go. It's done finally.
Personally.
No, not at all.
All right. Well, thank you all both for, for all your hard work and your team's work. This is just another great report and we've gotten spoiled to receive them easily. We shouldn't take them for granted. We kind of do now, but we know that it doesn't happen without a lot of hard work. So thank you very much.
If I'm not mistaken, I would like to thank the council and the administration for your support and all the folks that worked so hard in the audit.
That we couldn't do it without all the departments in the city. The auditors visit many of them and work with many of them and we appreciate that very much. Thank you.
Yeah, our thanks to airport and the health department. Those were the people that we went and visited for compliance auditing. So thank you so much for their assistance.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor and Council, our next discussion, Adam, is, has to do with the request for resolutions of support for proposed projects applying for inclusion in the low-income housing tax credit program administered by the Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs. Our Director of Housing and Code Enforcement, Galen Price is here. Galen?
Afternoon, Mayor and Council. Going to be discussing the projects that are requesting resolutions of support for participation in the low-income housing tax credit program. In this presentation, I'll give you a brief overview of our policy, discuss the projects that are requesting support, the recommendations, next steps, and answer any questions that you may have. The city council established criteria for resolutions of support at its January 21st city council meeting. These criteria included a minimum of 15% market rate units, a minimum of five units set aside for the housing authority and taxable real estate. These criteria, these criteria must be met to qualify for a resolution of support, but does not guarantee a resolution of support. This slide shows the income limits for the different household sizes that would be eligible to reside in the properties. Each property has a certain number of units set aside for income levels at 30%, 50%, 60% and/or 80% or market rate units. For example, the maximum rent someone would pay if they are at 30% of the area median income for a household size of one would be approximately $363, which would include utilities. At 50% of the area median income, that person would pay $605, including utilities. And at 60%, it would be $726, including utilities. The first request for support being made is being made by JES Development Company, Inc. for Page Estates. This development would be located at 11th and Ross, proposing the construction of 40 units specifically for seniors. There would be 34 affordable units and six market rate units in this project with an estimated total cost of approximately $8 million. This project would be located in a census tract of greater than 40%, which requires by TDHTA program rules that this be acknowledged in the resolution of support and that the city council authorizes the development to move forward if the, if the city chooses to support the development.
And that disclosure is necessary just to, I mean, as we've kind of talked in the past, to prevent clustering and make sure we understand that kind of aspirational and affordable housing, we, we want to spread it around the city. But just understanding and noting that, that this already is a census tract with a high poverty rate, that that's just kind of part, part and parcel of that. Okay. Which I'm fine with. I just wanted to clarify why we were having to talk about that.
Yes. Here's a map of the project site. Here is an example of a completed project provided by the developer. The developer is proposing a use of masonry and other materials similar to this rendering. As stated in the policy and the resolutions, the proposed development has to be compatible with this neighborhood.
And Galen, just to clarify also, so this certain developer has also met with the downtown neighborhood associations and other groups and have received favorable advice of bringing that project to that area, correct?
Yes, sir. That is correct. As part of the requirements for eligibility, they're all required to meet with the neighborhood associations and send out notices to the neighboring individuals.
And for the most part, those responses have been very favorable?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Diana, before we move on to the next project, this one, the, did I understand this is a senior development?
Yes, sir.
Is that right? And is that, is that like a deed restriction or how will that be? How's that oper, could that change at some point? Or, help me understand. I'm sorry for my ignorance, but how long does that, how long is this development bound to be, development for seniors?
It would be bound for development for seniors for approximately 30 years.
Okay, great.
They're required by, as part of their submission requirements to TDHTA, they are monitored annually for compliance with what they proposed that they suggested they would be doing in their development. So they're monitored annually. And if they're, they're not meeting those requirements, then there are penalties assessed.
Very good. And the, the building materials, I know we have some, some kind of, you know, high-level requirements consistent with the neighborhood, the submission. They indicate it'll be something like this. Will there be, how will that be enforced in practicality to make sure that it's, you know, not 5% brick or something like that? If, you know, what is, what does enforcement of that look like exactly?
Well, it's stated in the resolution specifically as well as the potential of a developer, development agreement, which would be tied to the fee waivers, the fee waiver, if the project makes it through the process towards the end. So if it's awarded by TDHTA, part of the requirement would be our participation of the fee waiver. And then that can be established through the development agreement.
That's great. That's exciting. This meets a real important need, I think, in this area for senior, affordable housing for seniors. I'm excited for that. Thanks.
I just had a question that was very similar to Dylan's, just about the construction materials and the, this one, this one looks great as far as brick content. But do you say that, maybe I'm a little confused on the timing. Do we get to know that this is going to be a 50% brick construction materials before we give the resolution of support? Or does that just happen somewhere down the line? Because I think my whole concern with all of these is I want there to be quality building in each one of these projects. And I don't want there to come back and say, you know, well, you said brick, it had to have some brick, but it was only like Dylan said, 5% or 2%. If it looks like that, I'm kind of happy with it. If it comes back and is all masonry and people can't, plan on living in that place for a while and have a quality place to live, I get concerned. So my concerns on all these resolutions of support go to the experience of the developer. Has he done this kind of project before? And I hate to make it so fundamental, but what are these things made out of? And will they last? Does the guy have experience and will these projects last? Because I think that's important as we talk about housing stock in the city of Waco. As these projects come in, it has to be something that has some longevity to it. So whatever evidence he can give me on minimum, you know, brick standards and developer experience, that he's going to put up a quality project. That we have this one in Snellville, and there's five other ones throughout the, or something like that. I would just like to see the experience of the developer and the, and the building standards.
Well, we have, we've researched some other projects that they have built here in the state of Texas. We've contacted other cities based on what they've built. As we did, we went through a process similarly last year, and they have maintained a standard as far as, as brick and the mixture. Now, again, we can tie those things into a development agreement that essentially if the fee waiver is not provided, then they would lose, potentially lose the project because they would lose points that were used to actually award the project.
And Galen, you know, I agree with Jim, but at the same time, I think it'd be helpful, you living in this world, eat, sleeping, and breathing this, and I don't. I want, I'm, I think Jim and I share the same concerns of wanting to have a solid project, something that looks beautiful, but also I don't want to over-regulate it when they're going to build something like this anyway. And then they're like, forget that, we'll go somewhere else, and we lose an opportunity to have a project like this that we desperately need. So if we're ever in these conversations, if, if we're ever, you know, if you're like, hey, they're going to build a brick building, and by you making these rules, they're going to leave, please be candid with us on that, too, because I don't want to be, I don't want to kill this deal if we're going to get a good product. In your, in your judgment, you're like, hey, this is going to be a good project.
Yes, sir. Well, we've had conversations with each of the developers, and they're committed to meeting the standards that we've set forth as far as our development goes, so.
I can tell you that the developer has reached out to me numerous times because it is in my district, and they have been more than cooperative and willing to do whatever we need them to do or ask them to do. And so I really appreciate, in fact, one of the representatives is here today. And so I really appreciate them being so honest and transparent with us as also just being so willing to work with us. So I'm glad that Galen has built that collaboration with them because I know they have a very open dialogue. We're there chatting almost every other day, and so I know the communication is there.
Thank you. Our second request for support is being made by Matt House Development Services for the Avante Viking Hills project. This development would be located at 6501 and 6515 Sanger Avenue. The development is proposing the construction of 82 units for families, including one, two, and three-bedroom units. There would be 69 affordable units and 13 market rate units with an estimated project cost of approximately $20 million. Again, here we have a map of the proposed project site. And then here is a rendering of the proposed project at this location. The developer is proposing to build a product with 100% masonry facade. Our third and final request for support is being made by the Housing Trust Group for the Brazos. This development would be located at 200 East Waco Drive. The development is proposing the construction of 100 units specifically for seniors, which would be one- and two-bedroom units. There would be 85 affordable units and 15 market rate units with an estimated total project cost of $17.3 million.
I will echo Councilmember Sabido in that housing, affordable housing units for our senior community is pivotal because we are definitely lacking the inventory. So projects like this are good and sound. I know that, and I have heard and spoken with the neighborhood associations that the pres, well, leadership of the Carver Neighborhood Association specifically, that they had some, you know, when they had their meeting, you know, the questions that they had were, you know, brought forth and answered, and, and they felt really strongly about supporting this project going forward. Just on the whole, and I wonder if you could help me with this. Is there any way going forward, not these projects at all, because, you know, these are already, you know, in the process they're in, have we given any consideration to asking the developers who are seeking these tax credits about addressing our initiative and focus and goals regarding equity? So that would be, you know, hiring, you know, contractors and subcontractors of color and doing the things that move forward, locally sourced builders and on those types of things. I don't know if, I don't know where we could potentially go with these requests, but I would just ask if there was any way that you could, we could start looking into that?
Yes, ma'am. Our policy, we have the ability to update our policy and make changes because these projects are typically requested once a year around this time. So we do have the ability throughout the year to reevaluate as well as, as part of our strategic housing plan. These would fall under criteria being evaluated as part of that plan. So we can establish criteria in that housing plan, which then in turn would establish criteria for resolution of support for any projects that come through in the future. So we are not, we have the ability to reevaluate our criteria annually or as often as the council sees fit.
Excellent. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments on these projects? All right. Galen, thank you for great presentations. I'm sorry.
Were you going to discuss the next steps of what happened?
Yes, yes. I have a few more slides to.
I have some questions about the next steps. That's why I was just wondering.
And here's an example of what's being proposed to be built at that location. Now, staff is recommending a resolution of support for each project. As discussed previously in and by the City Council and in our consolidated plan development, there has been a need expressed for additional affordable housing units here in Waco, whether it be rental and/or purchase units. These three projects provide an opportunity for the city to invest in addressing one of the express priorities with a minimal in-kind investment. By our low-income housing tax credit policy and resolutions, each of these developers are committed to making five or more units available for individuals who are referred by the housing authority as well as the development containing a mixture of affordable and market rate units. Also, each project would be responsible for the payment of real estate taxes, and each development would be within the city core.
Which is important.
Questions?
So for the next step, how long is the notice? Or how long do we wait for the notice from the final word from the TDHTA?
The final awards are typically done in July. So we will be looking at July of 2020. Once, here today, if you adopt a resolution of support for each project, each developer will wait for a final word from TDHTA regarding whether they're awarded or not. Now, the resolution of support does not guarantee that they will be funded by TDHTA, but it does provide points that are critical in the scoring process. Now, if awarded, you know, each project would go through the city's development process. So construction probably would not begin until 2021 at the earliest.
For all three developments simultaneously, or it's just sometime in 2021?
It would be sometime in 2021.
Okay. Thank you.
No, only, and I appreciate the work you've done on this. I wanted to iterate my, reiterate what my colleagues said that, A, this is needed. I think the TRID pointed out, there was a Harvard study that came out not too long ago that really highlighted the need for more affordable units just because there's a disparity between rents and incomes in our community. So I think these, all these projects are great. And just as we, again, as we work to refine and continue to develop the policy governing the support that we provide these, just making sure that anything that we adopt or require does not negatively impact the developer's ability to construct their projects. I mean, we don't want to hinder any of these developments. We want to have standards, but we want to be prudent about that. But we want to be encouraging of these types of projects because they really are needed in our city.
Seth, Galen, thanks for bringing a process to this and kind of developing some criteria. Because I know in past years, we haven't had this sort of, kind of a check-the-box deal where you're looking at everything on all these applications and helping us out as we make the decision to support the, or make the resolution of support for these projects. So I appreciate you doing the extra work to get to pull all this information together.
All right. Now, thank you. Great presentation. I'm sorry I tried to steal your last two slides. I really appreciate your leadership in this important area, Galen. Thank you. Are there any requests for future agenda items? Seeing none, we'll now recess the work session and reconvene regular session for executive session as read into the record by the City Secretary at 5:05 PM.
This is hereby given. The City Council will go into executive session in accordance with the following provisions. One, attorney briefing, Texas Open Meetings Act, Section 551.071, economic development, Texas Open Meetings Act, Section 551.087, and real property. Texas Open Meetings Act, Section 551.072, Brazos Riverfront Development, aka Brazos Promenade. Two, real property, Texas Open Meetings Act, Section 551.072. Three, economic development, Texas Open Meetings Act, Section 551.087. And four, personnel, Texas Open Meetings Act, Section 551.074, City Manager, Wally Stem III. We are now in executive session at 5:06 PM.